Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, February 21st, 2018 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. On the agenda today, commissioners will consider a joint ordinance naming the tactical training room at the Law Enforcement Training Center, the Hill-Lamunyan Tactical Defense Training Room. They'll have a donation to the Suicide Prevention Coalition, and they'll also receive the Appraiser's Annual Report of Real Property Value Trends in Sedgwick County. This weekend is the 12th Annual Death by Chocolate Event at Exploration Place, and I believe there's still tickets available to reserve your place. You can reserve your place by calling the center or by going online, wwwexplanation.org. And since there's no meeting next week, I'd like to remind everyone that summer hours begin at the Sedgwick County Zoo on March 1st. That means the zoo will be open from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., so even though it might not feel like summer out, summer hours will begin next week. And with that, Chairman, I will hand the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Kate. I appreciate it very much. At this time, I'd like to welcome everyone that's attending here in the audience, those that are attending on KPTS and those that are attending by Internet. I would like, at this time, call the meeting to order for February 21st, 2018. And Clerk, the first item of the business.
Invitation to be led by Reverend Randy Quinn, West Heights United Methodist Church, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let us pray. For all that is good, we give you thanks for the variety of seasons, changing from spring to summer to fall and winter and back to spring again. We give you thanks for rain and sunshine, for communities and neighborhoods where lives are shared. We give you thanks. At the same time, oh God, we acknowledge our unwillingness to give. We acknowledge our short-sighted vision that seeks only our individual good. Forgive us when we deny your goodness to others, when we refuse to share the abundance we have received, when we turn our backs on those in need, when we refuse to work for the common good. Forgive us. Give us courage, oh God, to confront the injustices, to stand with those who have no voice, to listen as well as to speak when divisions exist. Give us courage to do your will. Give us courage to bring good to all your people, knowing that you bring rain to the good and the evil, knowing your love is greater than we can imagine. Guide the decisions made today, that we might honor your desires, that we might honor our neighbors, that we might make this a better place to live. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. Appreciate very much you being here with us this morning. Next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Ranza?
Present.
Commissioner Howe?
Present.
Commissioner Unruh?
Present.
Chairman Dennis?
Present.
Next item.
Public agenda.
Thank you. We have one speaker this morning, Diane Greenwood. You may approach the podium, but you have three minutes.
Thank you for y'all not running for the mountains, for it is not the safest place to be, only it is safe when they do not track you through illegal means of a radio wave or speak with subliminal messages which are noted and dotted by Washington DC President's good office standing of the Star Wars project of no what's good for absolutely nothing. Clean farming land and clean water is a must to feed a nation that has been scarred for many moons within America for those that who have died and are still alive, which is the right to be here on earth. No, the pain and sorrow is our individual feelings, so therefore, the ocean we have underneath us with the natural waterways that are created with this earth, not by anybody else's designs, shall be respected, and the orders are coming out of Washington DC, which I know Dennis will respect and Richard will respect and Michael will respect and so will Jim and many people here that are coming out from being brainwashed, thinking their fatherhouse is going to rule America, to rule the world, to save us all. No matter what your faith is or your beliefs in America, all are welcome, for the freedom to be free is also the responsibility to forgive and help them walk well on the soles of their feet, to learn to love their own again, and not to try to take what is not theirs and overtax yourself and then say you have a national debt. America is not broken. My American United States bond certificates are of good standing. I pay my taxes upstairs, sir. So whoever has a national debt, your restitution, I have recommended no jail time, salt like Utah City, no single beds. I believe some of the rooms have hot tubs in it. Now, if you hid your favorite colors or your liking of clothing, please don't blame us. Look at yourselves. Now, the national debt, what I've recommended is you write, "Do not do this." Do not do, you know, do this. Each time you write that with the national debt that is of theirs, whoever they may be, we will not judge them. Judge not lest ye be judged. Our judges are pure at heart. They have had to listen to a byline that has been taken up to the highest court of America to set them free. Those that have already done their times and been executed, their families have received not guilty verdicts by hand of the Marine Corps or the Navy, for their family holding those precious papers that all evidence are in, that their family member was innocent.
Excuse me, Ms. Greenwood.
Now, the farming land is set free from you all because you all have no lien of taxes. We pay our taxes and the green berets will continue keeping the waterways clean. Thank you, sir, Ms. Dennis.
Thank you.
And remember, you're not on a time schedule on your life to live.
Thank you.
And I will not die, not the way they killed my family.
Is anyone else in the audience we speak today? There's no one else that's been on the agenda, but if anyone else would like to speak?
Not with my religious, their religious rights.
Thank you. Seeing none? Next item, please.
New business. Item A, a joint ordinance and resolution naming the tactical training room at the Law Enforcement Training Center, Hill-Lamunyan Tactical Defense Training Room.
Who is presenting? Sheriff Powell?
Thank you and welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Colonel Richard Powell with the Sheriff's Office. On behalf of Sheriff Easter, we thank you for the opportunity to join you this morning in the acknowledgement of retired Police Chief Richard Lamunyan and retired Sheriff Michael Hill in the honorarium in naming one of our classrooms at the new Law Enforcement Training Center at the WSU Innovation Campus in their names. I really don't have a lot of notes to speak of today. I think your notes cover a lot of things. I could do that and simply repeat. And we know that Chief Lamunyan served the citizens of Wichita for some 25 years as the longest-running or setting chief with the Wichita Police Department. And at the same time, retired Sheriff Mike Hill served the citizens of Sedgwick County, both with the Wichita Police Department and the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office for some 37 years. And in their forward vision, thinking, and their innovative thoughts of joining together the training of the Wichita Police Department and the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office in 1995, we've continued that practice up until today. As both first responders throughout our community, it has been most beneficial to have similar training, utilization of common resources, and good quality law enforcement practice throughout both the city and county. And we owe a lot of gratitude to those two individuals. And again, we offer our thanks to you as the Board of County Commissioners in recognizing their forward thinking from past years.
Thank you, Colonel Powell. I appreciate you being here this morning to recommend that we name a room out at the new Law Enforcement Training Center after Chief Lamunyan and Sheriff Hill. Both individuals are very deserving of this. They're the ones that had the vision for what turned out to be our Law Enforcement Training Center that we just recently opened out there. I know both individuals. Mike Hill is a very good friend of mine, and I think it is just absolutely tremendous that we name some part of that facility after them. So with that, is there anyone else who would like to speak before I make a motion, or would someone else like to make a motion? I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution that names a room, a tactical training room at the Joint Law Enforcement Training Center, the Hill-Lamunyan Tactical Defense Training Room. Second. I have a motion. I have a second by both Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner Howe. Any discussion? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you very much for being here today, Colonel Powell. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, please.
Item B, acceptance of donations totaling $710 for the Suicide Prevention Coalition.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Talia Schwartz, the Operations Manager for Calm Care. Unfortunately, I'm here today because sometimes we have to come in order to accept donations for memorials that are given from community members. On September 4th, 2017, a 25-year-old male here in our community completed suicide, and we have received 12 donations totaling $710 that we move to ask the Commission to
activity that occurred in 2017 and the impact it had on 2018 appraised values in Sedgwick
accept on behalf of the Suicide Prevention Coalition.
County. The Appraiser's Office's primary duty is, one, to physically inspect each property within
Outstanding. Well, we do appreciate you coming here, and we appreciate very much any donations that we receive from the community, and I think it's fantastic that we have $710 for suicide prevention to help other folks.
Sedgwick County every six years.
Do I have any other comments we'd be like to make today?
This equates to about 37,000 parcels per year.
Not? Do I have a motion?
We also need to discover, list, and value all property that had significant changes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we accept the donation, authorize the Chair to sign a letter of appreciation.
In 2017, there were over 9,000 building permits to review.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none?
And to update appraisals each year to assure that all properties are valued at fair market
Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
value.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
This requires the inspection of thousands of sold properties, the recalibration of
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item C, presentation of the Appraiser's Annual Report of Real Property Value Trends
scores evaluation models, and a review of all parcels. I think I thank a dedicated staff for this accomplishment.
in Sedgwick County.
Good morning, Mr. Borcher.
Our appraisers are also required to assign the appropriate classification based on the
Good morning.
Kate will give you a copy of the presentation there. use of the property. The Kansas Constitution defines the assessment rates based on the use of the property. The valuation approach and use determine the assessment rate to apply to the appraised value and to calculate assessed values. This slide shows the percent of assessed value by classification in Sedgwick County. Residential at 56%, together with commercial at 32%, make up 88% of the assessed value. When you include machinery, equipment, and public utility, you'll see that they make up 98% of the assessed value in the county. While we're still responsible for valuing the rest of the property types, they make up a very small fraction of the total. Parcel growth occurs when large parcels are subdivided into smaller parcels for development. There was an increase of over 1,100 parcels in 2017. This was mostly due to the plating new residential subdivisions for future development. The number of property transfers increased slightly in 2017, but showed less than a 1% increase year over year. Now, by classification, residential property represents about 56% of the total assessed value in the county. In 2017, there were 1,275 new dwelling permits. This is about a 24% increase over last year. The median sale price of existing homes continues to increase at about 2% per year. In 2017, it was 155,500. So when we compared what residential properties sold for in 2017 and the January 1, 2017 appraised values, at the mid-year, the median ratio of appraised value to sale price was around 91%. The reappraisal of residential property for 2018 resulted in 59% of the properties will see an increase in value. 6% will see a decrease in value, and 35% did not change in value. Commercial property represents about 32% of the total assessed value in Sedgwick County. The volume of commercial property sales has been stable for the last few years, but saw a 16% increase in 2017. Commercial building permit activity was down about 10% in 2017. When we compared what commercial properties were selling for and the 2017 appraised values, the ratio was typically less than 90%. So the reappraisal of commercial property for 2018 resulted in 28% of the properties will see an increase in value, 17% will see a decrease in value, and 55% did not change in value. 67% of the land in Sedgwick County is devoted to agricultural use, but represents less than 1% of the total assessed value. The Property Valuation Division sets the ag use values for the state using an eight-year moving average formula. Our appraisers are responsible for determining the use of the land and extracting out the number of acres dedicated to each use. Ag land is classified into the categories of dried cultivated land, irrigated land, tame grassland, and native grassland. The reappraisal of agricultural property for 2018 resulted in 65% of the properties will see an increase in value, 3% a decrease in value, and 32% did not change in value. 67% of the land in Sedgwick County is devoted to agricultural use, but represents less than 1% of the total assessed value. The Property Valuation Division sets the ag use values for the state using an eight-year moving average formula. Our appraisers are responsible for determining the use of the land and extracting out the number of acres dedicated to each use. Ag land is classified into the categories of dried cultivated land, irrigated land, tame grassland, and native grassland. The reappraisal of agricultural property for 2018 resulted in 65% of the properties will see an increase in value, 3% a decrease in value, and 32% did not change in value. So the 2018 valuation summary is shown on this slide. Of the 59% that increased, residential properties that increased, the typical change rate was 5%. The typical commercial change rate was 4%, and the typical agricultural increase was We'll look at some key dates on the property tax calendar that are shown here. Value notices will be mailed out next Thursday, March 1. March through May, we will make adjustments to real property values through the appeal process and finalize personal property valuations. June 1, we will certify the appraisal role to the clerk, and taxing authorities determine budget and tax rates are calculated. The Sedgwick County Appraiser's Office will only mail value notices to property owners that experience a change in the appraised value or classification from 2017. Approximately 142,500 real property value notices will be mailed for 2018, which is about 64% of all properties in the county. Property owners who do not receive a notice in the mail can view the appraisal information for their property beginning March 1 online at the Sedgwick County website. After March 1, property owners can print a value notice from the website, which will include instructions on how to file an appeal. If property owners do not think their values reflect fair market value or would like an explanation of how the value was determined, they can fill out the back of the value notice and return it to our office within 30 days of the date indicated on the front of the notice. Once returned, this will be used to schedule a meeting with our office, and these appeal meetings begin March 20th this year. It's important to remember that county appraiser is required by law to value property in a uniform and equal manner and should not be considered an adversary. An increase in value does not necessarily result in an increase in taxes. The revenue needed for local services is set during the budget hearings held in August. Increases or decreases in property values do not change the amount of tax dollars needed So for any information, assistance, property owners, representatives, are welcome to call or stop by our office, and our website is a very good resource for researching information. That concludes our report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Borcher. First of all, as far as the reports, it looks like in the residential area, the sale price, number of parcels, new construction, the number that went up in value is pretty good news for the economy. Looks like it's going. Commercial side didn't look quite as rosy as the residential area. Is this what you're looking at as far as?
Yeah. It's a supply and demand issue. The last two years, there's been a shortage of existing homes for sale, and it just continues to drive up the price of homes. And also, the fact that there's a shortage means that there may be more new construction, and you can see from the new dwelling permits that there was an increase in new permits this year.
Okay. Well, as far as our residents in Sedgwick County, after March 1, they are going to be checking their mailboxes, I'm certain. Those that don't have anything in there probably are going to be a little happier than those that do have something in there. But all of our residents can expect the possibility that there will be something in their mailbox sometime after the first March. But we do have a process in place that if they don't agree with the figures that you all came up with, that they can file a protest. You have procedures in place that they can go and talk with you about the process and how that you came up with those values, correct?
That's correct.
Very good. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael, I just had one question I guess I'm not quite clear on. Will you send notices to everyone that's had a change, whether it went up or down, or just only to those that had an increase?
Any property that changed value or classification will receive a notice, up or down. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then another question, you talked about market forces that changed the value changes on residential. Does that also apply to the ag parcels? Because we had about two out of three of those increased in value. Is that market forces again?
Well, it is market forces, but it's market forces from the past. So when they're using an eight-year average to determine the ag land values, they're still looking at back when the market was better than it is today.
Okay.
So the fact that they're going up 5% may not be an indication of the current market.
And do you think most of the owners of ag land understand that rolling average and that they might kind of be caught in a time lag?
Most of them do.
Okay.
I mean, it was their idea to create the eight-year average to smooth out the increases and decreases over time, so they can expect that over the next several years that those values will start trending downward.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Following along with the agriculture part, it's important to understand that that is kind of a rolling average, because I was surprised, I think on your briefing, it was only 3% of the agricultural land decreased in value, but crop prices are way down right now, and that's going to impact the value of that ag land greatly in the future.
That's correct. Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to, first of all, thank you for the presentation this morning. I always appreciate hearing from you. And first thing I would say is, when property values go up, I know people don't like to pay more property taxes, but I think it is a snapshot that the economy is moving in the right direction. There's a, it's certainly a seller's There's a, it's certainly a seller's market. Housing prices are going up, and I think it's an indication that our economy is improving. And I just, I think that's actually, from a policymaking perspective, that's actually good to see that. But of course, I know nobody likes to, excuse me, nobody likes to pay more property taxes. And again, I do appreciate that there's a process where they can make an appeal should they feel like their values are incorrect. But just want to make sure I understand a couple of things. Your goal is to appraise their value at a, you're trying to determine a fair market value of their property, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so as sale prices go up, is that something you watch and that somehow feeds into your formula, or how do you do that?
Well, each year, we'll add the following year's sales to the analysis. And when we compared those, that new year's of sales to our older prior year values, the ratios were less than 90% in many cases. So that's a pretty good indication that overall our appraisals needed to increase.
Okay. And let me just ask, excuse me, let me ask you a very basic question, that is. And that is, do you sense any pressure from elected officials, Board of County Commissioners, to change the value of property taxes up or down? In either case, are you feeling pressure from us to change the way you do your job? And the reason I ask the question is because it was insinuated on Saturday, I'll explain this in just a minute, but it was insinuated on Saturday at a local event that basically county appraisers increase property values because the county commissioners, if you will, encourage them or pressure them to do so. So I'd like to ask you to respond to that.
We're strictly making our appraisal decisions based on market data.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I knew that was the answer, but I wanted you to clarify that. There was a Republican convention this weekend, and there was a gubernatorial debate that happened Saturday night, and it was interesting to me, I don't remember seeing any of this in the news. Any news stories came out to clarify the accuracy of their answers, but one of the questions came up about property taxes. And I think that we would all probably agree, or most of us probably would agree, that property taxes are one of the least popular taxes of all the different types of taxes we might pay. In that regard, the question was about what are the candidates going to do if they're elected governor to reduce the increases in property taxes? And one of the candidates mentioned something about a stealth tax, and I think what he was implying, and I think he kind of explained it, he talked about when property values go up, it just creates more dollars for local government, and that the appraisers are being pressured to do so. Other words, increase the values arbitrarily to create more dollars for county budgets. And so I find that to be completely not based in what's really going on in Kansas. Back in 2015, the legislature passed what we call the Tax LID, and it was legislation that passed in the middle of the night without a hearing, but it was a bipartisan-supported piece of legislation. But it did have some problems, and so in 2016, Sedgwick County leaned forward, and we provided some solutions, but we did go up to Pekin and advocate for some solutions in terms of the dates and things like that. And those were adopted by the state. They also exempted public safety, they also implemented, I think, rolling averages. But what this does is if property valuations increase faster than Consumer Price Index, essentially, we've got to lower our middle levy so we can stay under the Consumer Price Index growth rate. Otherwise, we've got to go to the voters and ask for them, ask them to approve any increases that would exceed Consumer Price Index. I was surprised that the candidates did not seem to understand that this has already been dealt with, and then they also advocated for an exemption for public safety, which of course, again, has already been implemented in state law. So to the extent that the public may have seen that debate and may have heard those answers and may have a misconception exactly how the county commissioners, you know, connect to the county appraiser, I wanted to be clear that you are independent office that does not take your marching orders from the county commission, and that the stealth tax, if there was one, that has been dealt with with state law, and the public safety has been exempted out, and we are required by law to keep our growth rate under the CPI on a rolling average basis. And having said that, I think we've done a good job at that, and I expect we will continue to do a good job at that. But anyway, to the extent that that information got out and it was inaccurate, I wanted to speak to that issue. So anyway, I appreciate the fact that you are an independent organization. We don't have control over how you do your job, that you do this according to state law, and that's the way it needs to be. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I have no other questions, but I would be willing to make a motion to receive and file the report.
Please, we have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item D, reported the Board of Bids and Contracts Special Meeting of February 13, 2018.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on February 13, we have three items to present to you this morning. Our first item is Business by Design Test System for Enterprise Resource Planning. The recommendation is to accept the quote from SAP Public Services Incorporated for a total three-year cost of $95,490.90. Our second item is Kronos Workforce Maintenance and Support, and this is for Information, Technology, and Support Services. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Kronos Incorporated in the amount of And our final item for today is Community E-Waste Collection Event for Environmental Resources. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Dynamic Recycling Incorporated with a negotiated lump sum event cost of $153,660 and a collection rate of 24 cents per pound, and this will be for the duration of the event. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I recommend approval of these three items.
Thank you. Well, first of all, we've all had a chance to review these in the past before the meeting. One that really stands out in my mind is the e-waste. Remember, just a few years ago, we had a collection out at Coliseum and took in something like a million pounds of e-waste, had traffic packed up and down 135, trying to get in there to get rid of that. The Commission here several months ago added a small fee so that we could make sure that we could get rid of this e-waste and also do some stream maintenance. And this is a culmination of those efforts that have gone into it. I appreciate Public Works and Susan Earlyman and her folks from leading this effort to make sure that we do have the opportunity to do some e-waste collection. So I understand that they're probably going to do this out at the West Yard of our Public Works here in the near future. Things are in place, we're moving towards getting the chance that folks that have old computers, TVs, even down to cell phones, if they want to get rid of those. We will make sure that if you turn in a computer, that we'll destroy that hard drive, no personal information. If it's not already removed from that hard drive, no personal information will be available after we get hold of it, because we'll destroy that immediately. So I think this is just a kind of a culmination of a great project that we've got working for our citizens. Anyway, I think that all three projects are very worthwhile, and I recommend and make a motion that we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts. Second. We have a second by Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner Howell.
Don't accept the full agenda. We will not destroy any...
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend your approved consent agenda items echo through Juliette.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move we approve consent agenda items foxtrot through Juliette.
We have a motion on foxtrot through Juliette. Second. We have a second on that by Commissioner O'Donnell. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item is Item E on the Consent Agenda. I move that we approve Item E on our Consent Agenda. Second. We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Unruh. Discussion? Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is to give the Greater Wichita Partnership $45,000 to hire a consultant to develop a comprehensive economic strategy. Evidently, there's going to be a total of $135,000 put into this. I guess I have some concerns about this. My backend material says that they're going to hire a consultant to bring more focus to the partnership's economic development efforts. They're going to establish an organizational structure that optimizes economic development. They're going to bring clarity and innovative ways to brag, and they're going to develop strategies to work together. These are all good things, but these things that should have already been done at the very beginning. We'd be given $300,000 of taxpayer money to this organization for three years. That's almost a million dollars, that's $900,000, and these basic things have not been accomplished. And that's very troubling. I don't think the answer is just to throw more taxpayer dollars at it. I think if something needs to be done, first of all, we need answers as a commission as to why these things haven't already been done. We need some accountability for our $900,000. If they lack focus, they lack an effective organizational structure to optimize and coordinate economic development efforts, they lack clarity, they lack innovation, they lack strategies to work together. I mean, these are things that are supposed to have been happening all along. We need some accountability. I would prefer that resources be taken out of, or the money be taken out of existing resources that they've already been given, if this is a priority. But before that, I think this Commission, City Council, everyone involved, we should have some accountability as to why this organization has failed to do these things already, who's being held responsible, what is the accountability? We need something in writing from the partnership as to why these things haven't been done. This is very troubling. Rather than giving them, you know, the partnership was started to replace GWDC, because GWDC, after years of everybody saying it was great and wonderful, evidently wasn't doing as good a job as what we were told. So we started this partnership, been given a $300,000 a year, and now we're telling, being told they need more money because they're not doing the basics. Rather than throwing more taxpayer money at it, we need accountability, and we need to question going forward if we're going to continue to give them money if they can't do these things, accomplish these things within three years. So I want to make a substitute motion that we table this motion until we receive something in writing with respect to the accountability and what's been going wrong in the Wichita Partnership and why this hasn't already been done.
Thank you, Commissioner Ranzau. We have a substitute motion. Do I have a second?
I agree.
Do I have a second?
I agree.
Do I have a second?
I agree.
Motion fails due to the last second. We're back to Commissioner Ranzau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'm disappointed that a motion for accountability with respect to taxpayer dollars didn't even get a second.
Oh, it did, by the people.
Ma'am, I'm going to have you removed from the room.
Do you want me to walk, sir, on that footnote? I will be glad to, because I will not disturb this time.
Ma'am?
Thank you, Richard, for speaking up.
Please leave.
And as you guys do not collect the retirement check, well, you guys might, but let's walk with...
We're conducting a business meeting.
We, the people of America, believe in free enterprise and not just our freedom, but right to life.
Good day, ma'am.
...with Clean Water Act and farmland, which you guys are trying to possess illegally.
Chief Hands, can you remove her from the room, please?
Thank you, sir. I'm glad I was heard clearly by your service, sir.
Commissioner Ranzau, I apologize. You may speak.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just say I'm disappointed that we're not going to demand accountability for the figures of the partnership to perform these basic functions. The fact that we couldn't even get a second is very disappointing as well. So as such, I'm going to have to oppose this, and I'll continue to have the position that if these things haven't gotten done already, I think the taxpayers deserve some answers, and there needs to be some accountability as to why this stuff hasn't already been done. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to express my support for the Greater Wichita Partnership and for the, in my opinion, the great work that they have accomplished so far. I believe there's significant momentum in our community and in our region that most of our citizens not only perceive but support. And so in light of the fact that progress is being made, results are being achieved, and that in the collective wisdom of all the members of the partnership, which is not just government folks, but business members in our community, the majority of the leadership committee of the Greater Wichita Partnership is citizens in the community who have put in not only their tax money to local government, but they have contributed out of their earnings directly to the partnership in a multiple of what our local governments contribute. So the, I think the accountability is there. I think the results have clearly been exhibited, illustrated to us what's been going on. The partnership produces on a regular basis a summary of their results over the last timeframe, so we are not unapprised of the progress they've made. But without being able to clearly quantify what this momentum is, I think it's clear to me and it's clear to others in our community, and I think our citizens want us to do what the leadership group, mostly business folks, perceive to be the right thing to do at this time to capitalize on that momentum and move us forward. So it's just in kind of counterpoint to the comments of my colleague, but I think results are being achieved. I'm proud of the work that's being accomplished, and I'm going to be supportive of the motion that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see that we have both Mr. Flure and Mr. Nave from the partnership here, and since this is such a well-developed discussion right now, if we could have Mr. Flure come up and talk about kind of what this comprehensive strategy is and why this is so important for the county to be a partner, if that's all right with you, Mr. Chairman.
That's quite right, thank you.
Do you mind?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, County Manager, Jeff Flure, President of the Greater Wichita Partnership. First of all, I want to say thank you for the partnership we do have with you, because through this public-private partnership, we are seeing great results. I mean, if you look back at last year, the number of jobs created, the capital investment, and you all are very much involved in that process. One of the things that we did, as was mentioned, it'll be three years ago this coming April, was the creation of the Greater Wichita Partnership, and it was a really, I think it was a bold move by our community to look at downtown development to 10 counties holistically. If you've looked at other cities that have really seen progress in the development of not only their cities, but their regions, they have taken similar steps, and those results are proven and are there. So in the three years that our community has done that, you have been at the table. I mean, you have served on the partnership executive board, you all have been involved. We do quarterly investor meetings where reports are given to say, here's how we're seeing progress, here are the strategies. And I would say that we focus in on six areas. As you well know, we work on primary jobs, entrepreneurship, workforce and development. And by that, I mean, how is it that we tie education to what business is saying we need in graduates, whether it's through high school, technical college, postgraduate degrees? Perceptions, how is it that our city is being perceived internally but also externally? How is it they work with downtown vitality? And then talent, because I will tell you, in economic development, I know Andrew Nave was with you, I think, last week, talking about all the different aspects of economic development. Talent's extremely important, so we work in that area as well. So each of these are key focus points, if you will. As you develop an organization, you learn things as you move forward. There's new opportunities, there's different dynamics in the marketplace. So one of the things in particular, why we are at this moment on this particular item, is that the blueprint for regional economic growth has been in place now for a little over two years. So we've learned a lot in how that is being implemented and working with the county manager and assistant county manager. We have actually formed what we call a strategic advisory team that works with Andrew Nave's team to be very purposeful in what we do, because we always want to have deliberate strategies for intended outcomes. And so if we're not seeing those intended outcomes, then why aren't we? But one of the things that became apparent is as we're two and a half years into Breg, is that how is it that we really position those clusters that are really positioned for growth today? So how is it that we make sure that we're really... What resources, as your economic development arm, because that's what we do, is serve on your behalf to work forward with economic development, how is it we continue to make our organization more efficient, but also in that way, I mean, as far as the resources? How is it, what's the information we need to make sure that we're producing? What is it that we need to be tactically doing as a team? That will change. I know that you've done the exact same thing, where you kind of look at yourself to say, with the county, how is it that we move forward knowing today what we may have not known a couple of years ago? So that's where we are in this process. Market Street, the group that's being engaged to do this, is a very reputable company. If you look at the cities they've worked with, it's a who's-who's list of cities that have really moved forward in tough economic times. They went through a very rigorous interview process, you all were involved in that interview process. And so again, we feel very confident with the group we want to move forward with. We, as a partnership from the private sector side, are going to be putting in a little over a third of the money. So we firmly believe that any time we come to you, it's a partnership. We're leveraging private dollars, and we want to leverage your dollars as well to get a maximum return on that investment. So Commissioner, hopefully that kind of gives you an overview of where we've come from, where we are today, but importantly, I think, where we want to be able to go in the future.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Flure. Couple of other points to go along with what Mr. Flure already said is that, first of all, county staff had been sitting in meetings all along, step by step, as they went through, I know at least two companies, because I saw the final two presentations where Market Street was one of the two. The county staff, along with the commissioners, were looking at what we needed. I've talked about this a number of times in the past, that we need to take a look at what our strategic plan is going forward, making sure that we understand exactly the direction that we need to go, so that we are focusing our taxpayer's dollars in the right place, and that we're doing things that's going to enhance the economy, we're going to grow this area, not just Sedgwick County, but the entire region. So that's the reason that we're looking at this project. So I will be looking favorably to voting for this. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to ask a couple of questions and make a couple of statements. First of all, I'd like to say, Jeff Flure, thank you for the presentation this morning. First question, I think, is maybe for Mr. Manager. Do we have a budget item that would cover this expenditure?
The forty-five thousand will come out of the Economic Development Fund that we have that's adopted in the budget.
And so, in your opinion, there is money to do this?
Yes.
All right. We did have a staff meeting a while back, and I think Jeff Flure did come to that and present at that meeting, if I remember correctly. And I would say, over the last year and a half or so, Commissioner Dennis has raised an issue. I think I felt the same way, but he articulated it much better than I did. So the frustration that we've got many arms of economic development effort we're connected to, some of them more so than others, but let me just mention a few of these that are out there in the community. We have, of course, Wichita Chamber does a good job, WEBA focusing more on local smaller business, we have G W P, which is obviously completely focused on economic development, bringing in jobs and retaining jobs. We have BRAG, which is another economic arm. We have SKED, another economic arm. We have Kansas Global. We also have REAP. And I'm probably missing some, I don't even know if I've got them all. But that's at least a number of different ways we try to impact economic development through the different agencies and a lot of different personalities. And I think it's a little bit frustrating from a policymaking perspective to see everybody out there kind of doing their own thing. And so what this does is a comprehensive economic strategy, and I think that's what you articulated, Mr. Chairman, that what we don't have is an overall strategy on how we're going to do economic development in relation to all these different organizations and arms of effort. And so I think this is sorely needed. We did have a staff meeting, and we've been briefed on this in the past. I would imagine, I don't know if this is what you plan on going forward, but the consultants, I would assume, would start off with strategy and goals, that they would develop that and probably would speak back to us along the way. So in terms of accountability, I have no doubt we're going to see results out of this effort, and so I don't think we're just going to hand over money and not have any feedback as to what's going on and a solution to this problem. And so I do think at some point we have to trust them, but G W P by themselves is not the right organization, out of all those I just listed, to provide, if you will, a front-end list of mission, goals, and accountability strategy. I think that's what the consultant's supposed to do. So I guess my opinion is we need to move forward. This is also one-time funding. It's a forty-five thousand dollars one time, and again, we're one of several funding portions for this. It's not solely Sedgwick County, it's us and others. And so I would say this is something we sorely need, and I would be willing to support this. In fact, I'd be glad to make a motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you. I think, don't we have a motion?
I guess we already did.
Yes, Chairman.
Never mind, they don't need that, so I apologize. Motion's been made already.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I appreciate all the comments from everyone. I'll just simply say, we've had a nice, a lot of nice words and comments and flowery sentences, but no answer as far as accountability. This reminds me of how things went on back when we had G W C. We had presentations all the time, and everybody's saying, oh, this is great and wonderful, we're doing all these great things, and all of a sudden, boom, well, we have to create a whole new organization because G W C actually wasn't doing as good a job as what we thought. Now, it's interesting that, I agree with my colleagues' comments about, you know, we have all these organizations, and we need to have a comprehensive plan and everybody working together. Well, that was exactly what we were told was going to happen when G W P was formed. I've seen charge with all these organizations listed up there, and that was exactly what we were told. We're going to get all those organizations together and work together. And now we're being told, three years later, that we don't have a strategic plan. Talk about momentum and progress and results. Well, obviously, there's been jobs created, but I don't have any evidence or any reason to believe that it's a result of the partnership. I think it's a result of natural occurring within the economy. Things that are happening at the federal level are having more of an impact as far as our economy than apparently the partnership is. Look at one of these. It says, "We need strategies to maintain and grow the aerospace clusters while working to attract and grow businesses in other industries that will strengthen and diversify the regional economy." Strategies to grow the aerospace and yet diversify the economy. We've been talking about that for years. I thought that's what we were doing. Is that not what we've been told for years? We've been talking about, that's what we need to do, and that's what this organization was going to do, but now we need more money to hire a consultant to tell us how to do that three years in? I mean, I'm just saying, we should have already been there. And I'm troubled that we're not doing that already. We don't already have strategies to grow aerospace clusters as well as other industries that will strengthen and diversify our economy? We're not already doing that? So today, we'll spend another forty-five thousand dollars, and it will be no accountability. We'll spend more money to do what we said we've been doing for years already.
Thank you, Commissioner Ranzau. Well, first of all, I think we have had accountability as we've been building this, at least from Sedgwick County portion, because we've had people that are involved in the process each step of the way. Tom Stoltz, Mike Scholes, I sat on the final decision-making board that helped choose Market Street. As long as we have our people, that we have tasks here within Sedgwick County to be looking at this project as it moves forward, we do have accountability. Any further comments? Commissioner Ranzau?
I'm sorry, attending meetings is not accountability. I'm talking about, we have a partnership that we've put in three-hundred-thousand dollars a year, I think, for three years, correct me if I'm wrong, about nine-hundred-thousand dollars, to do these fundamental things, and no one's doing it. Who failed? What failed? And why? That's accountability, not attending meetings. But we don't want to really have accountability because that's a tough, I mean, that's a tough question, because that means you really got to take an honest look at that and say, why don't we already have these things that we said we were going to do for three years? And who's going to be held accountable? In the end, it's the taxpayer's going to be held accountable, evidently. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Manny Truitt?
Yeah, I have a comment about this. You know, first off, I would say that, you know, having Jeff Flure and Andrew in their positions right now, you know, the leadership that they provide has been tremendous. If you look at the activity that we have just completed this year as compared to last year, you can see nothing but growth, including in the amount of interest and deals that have been closed this year compared to last year is just, you know, I can't even tell you the percentage of it, but it's definitely increased tremendously. The second is, the previous commitment, there is a BRAG framework in place, as Jeff talked about. There is coalitions and associations that are part of the G W P that we could never replicate in our government. If we created our own economic development cell, we would need the same players that are in S A T, that are in G W P. We'd have to go to them and include the same ones and put them around the table. I would say the third thing is clearly the economy right now, in terms of, you know, the South Central Region and Kansas, is very fluid. You're going to have to do these strategic plans and especially create a regional economic, you know, implementation plan regularly. This is not something that we could replicate. Having somebody with Market Street Services pedigree come in here and look at what we do have and be able to put some, you know, some meat on the skeleton that's already rare, the framework that's already where is going to be priceless. You know, in attending these meetings and looking at the ingredients that we have in the pot right now, we can do nothing but improve what we have right now. And I've been a member of this for over two and a half years, and it's done nothing but get better. And I think we've got a lot of the great leadership in place. I think this can do nothing but help cement what we already have. I wouldn't be surprised, in a few years, we'd have to get another firm out here just to continue to look at it from an unbiased viewpoint. It's hard to make change when you're inside the pot, but when you're outside and you're coming in, especially with Market Street Services, and look at what you do have, you can do nothing but improve. So I would say that there has been a lot that's been done based off the investment that this county has already made, and we can do nothing but improve on that by bringing Market Street Services in here. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioner Ranzau?
Well, Market Street is so good, and we don't have those resources here. Maybe we need to hire somebody from Market Street and put them in the G W P then. We don't have that expertise to do the basic fundamentals of what we've been talking about. There's a problem. I know we don't want to have this discussion, but we need to have a discussion, but I guess today's not the time. We're just, you just can't keep throwing money at it, you know. This is, let's just vote, I guess.
Thank you, Commissioner Ranzau. Seeing no further comments, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. At this time, I'd like to recess the Board of County Commissioners meeting and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One for February 21st, 2018. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Unruh?
Present.
Chairman Dennis?
Present.
Do we have anyone that wants to speak on the public agenda today? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item B, fire meeting minutes of December 13th, 2017.
We have a motion by Commissioner Unruh, second by Commissioner Dennis. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
New business. Item B, contract for fire protection for Textron Aviation Incorporated.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Joe Norton with Gilmore and Bell, the county's bond counsel. As you may recall, last week at the commission meeting, the board adopted a resolution approving the issuance by the City of Wichita of approximately four-hundred-and-thirty-five million dollars worth of industrial revenue bonds to benefit Textron Aviation. One of the conditions of that approval was that Textron entered into a fire protection contract with the Fire District to provide revenues for the services that that district would make available to them. A little history might be helpful for you. We probably started doing these twelve to fifteen years ago, where the city issued bonds for Cessna. As part of that approval, similar fire protection contracts were required, and those entered into with Cessna. The county also did, when they issued IRBs for Beech Aircraft, there were similar fire protection contracts entered into. When Textron Aviation was formed about two years ago, there was amendment to those prior contracts whereby Textron assumed those financial responsibilities from Beech and Cessna. Since the new letter of intent was approved last week by the county, this new contract would match up with the new letter of intent, which has a five-year opportunity for bonds to be issued by the City of Wichita. This contract would require as a service fee that Textron pay to the Fire District an amount equal to what the mill levy would be on the property that is financed by those IRBs that is located in the unincorporated area of the county. Because this is a service contract as opposed to a pilot or payment loop tax contract, those fees that are collected go directly to the Fire District to provide the services. They are not taxes, which are then apportioned to other taxing jurisdictions within the county. This form has been around for a while. It's been approved as a form by the county councillor's office. I would recommend your approval and would stand for any questions you may have about its effectiveness.
Thank you. Just to clarify this, we would not be able to receive the eighteen mills that we normally receive for the fire protection unless we did something like this to offset the loss.
Right, we're getting a service contract fee in lieu of that tax revenue. Yes.
Very good. I don't see any questions? Do I have them? Any discussion? None?
If not, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we take the recommended action.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. With that, I will adjourn the Fire District meeting and call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Next item.
Legislative issues.
Thank you.
Commissioner Will Dear, Assistant County Counselor. Got a couple of updates. House Bill 2597, which was the urban area designation bill, passed on general orders yesterday on the House floor, so it'll be on final action this morning. The election commissioner bill, which was House Bill 2509, which was the bill we were supporting relating to the budget of the election commissioner, that will be on general orders today on the House floor, and that's also above the line, so I would expect to see debate on that bill today. The two Senate bills, which were Senate Bill 299, which was the companion bill of 2509, and then Senate Bill 229, which was another bill that would have also given the power to the county commissioner body to appoint the election commissioner, those are both still pending in committee, and I don't think they're going to be worked. So I think this election commissioner bill is going to come out of the House at this point. The other update I have on the cybersecurity bill, there was a substitute for that, which was House Bill 2539, which removed all the references to charging fees on a per-employee basis, kind of cleaned that bill up and got everybody on board with that. That bill is also on general orders today, and that would create a cybersecurity kind of mechanism or, you know, policy level for the state, but it was not going to, you know, charge our employees the three-hundred-and-fifty or seven-hundred dollars per year.
Clarify, cybersecurity is not going to cost Sedgwick County anything?
Not on the substitute bill. The bill 2560, which is the one that we opposed and wrote a couple of letters, that's been substituted out for House Bill 2539, and there's no references to a per-employee fee. Sheriff's Association and some of the other folks that are up there are more involved in it. or, you know, policy level for the state, but it was not going to, you know, charge our employees the $350 or $700 per year.
Clarify, cybersecurity is not going to cost Sedgwick County anything?
Not on the substitute bill. The Bill 2560, which is the one that we opposed and wrote a couple of letters, that's been substituted out for House Bill 2539, and there's no references to a per-employee fee. Sheriff's Association and some of the other folks that are up there are more involved in it, seem okay with it, and it's on general orders today. So.
Okay. Do I have questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Next item.
Other?
Do I have anything from the commissioners on other agenda? Seeing nothing? We have no executive session scheduled for today. If there's nothing else to come before the board today, we adjourn.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited.